Motion passes. Next is a consent agenda.
Just to note, I did add that second.
I saw that.
Okay.
Thank you. I move to approve the consent agenda.
You moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Is there anybody here from the public like to speak to something that's not on the agenda? Yeah, we have solar ordinance, agenda to discuss. Yeah, so. Okay. First item is the old business. So the council voted to um to sell the old motel lot. However, in the motion, we need a motion to allow me to sign the deed for the sale of it and for the title company. Is there anybody like to speak to this agenda item? Seeing none, council discussion.
So the mayor has to sign the deed? That's what?
Yeah, some.
So we just didn't say that?
Yeah, you just didn't authorize the mayor to sign the deed.
Well.
Not all entertained motion.
I move to give authorization to Mayor Semino to sign the deed for the old motel property.
I second it.
Moved in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item is the electric ordinance revision. Baker Tilly, you guys want to present first?
Okay, thanks. In the previous motion you made to for the rate change, we were, the goal was to increase rates, essentially increase revenue by 10%. And when the calculations were made to do that, the new rate did not take into account the uh increase to the meter fee, the debt service fee that was included in that time. And so the ordinance you'll be looking at today will pull out essentially that difference between what the meter fee and the new, essentially the meter fee combined with the new rate will be a 10% increase rather than what was previously passed, which did not take that into account.
Do you, this is your committee, you have anything to add to that?
No, I think uh um you know, we talked about this in the council meeting when we actually brought the ordinance forward and passed it. You know, we came up with that idea to increase the meter fee, which we need to start calling the debt fee going forward to $25 on the Friday before the Tuesday meeting. And you know, Baker Tilly went off and you know scrambled to put the numbers together. And normally in the budget finance committee, we take some time and scrutinize, you know, the number just so we understand it. And we hadn't done that yet by the time of the meeting. So we committed, even after we passed it, that we're going to continue to do that, you know, that due diligence. And if there was an error, we'd change it. So that's what we found, you know. We saw that. And what you'll see tonight is actually correcting it back to make it a net neutral event for the citizens.
Any questions for Baker Tilly? We'll have public comment here in just a second.
Okay.
So just to clarify for some folks, so it sounds, what ended up happening was is that the um increase to the debt fee ended up being cooked in affecting the rate. It ended up affecting the rate and that shouldn't have happened. That shouldn't have been calculated into the rate.
Right, we essentially it was added after we had figured the, what a 10% rate increase would look like. We didn't pull it back out after, okay, after we added the increase of the debt service.
So it's a subtle, it's a, I mean, dollar per household, where I think we looked at this like.
I didn't look at dollar per household. For the actual, it's about 0.9% points for the kilowatt hour.
Okay, so that's now corrected.
Yeah.
Alright.
And did you look at what we've put together for, you know, the corrected fee and kind of the math around that? I know you were, you were at the meetings.
Ben and I both ran the numbers on it.
Okay.
We agree, it's, it'll satisfy what you're trying to do.
Yeah, it'll get to the 10%.
Correct.
Total revenue increase from first half. Okay.
Right.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody here like to speak to this agenda item? Seeing none, we will close public comment and open up council discussion.
Yes, I need some clarification on these two options because I not having them side by side, it's making it difficult to differentiate.
I'll take a stab and let the others, including Baker Tilly, jump in. But um what we tried to do is two things. The first option would credit each household for the amount that in July that we overcharged in a one-time credit. And a new rate going forward, that's, you know, the correct rate going forward after that. That's just very high level what that one does. And the second option corrects the rate, but the payback for the overcharge in July is over the next five months based on that forecast, based on our kilowatt hour forecast for those five months. So that's fundamentally the difference. The net result revenue wise is virtually the same. I mean, maybe like $5,000 apart based on surrounding errors when you, you know, when you do the rate. But essentially that's, that's targeted. And you won't know which one is effectively better until the end of the year, when you know how many kilowatt hours you end up using. So on the second one, since it's a new rate that, you know, that forecasts against August through December usage, that if an household or the city uses more than that, they're actually getting more paid back, right? Because it's a lower rate. Where the citizens and the city break even is if they hit the number that we forecast and then that comes out. So conversely, if they use a little less, they're going to end up paying, you know, slightly more. And just so we understand what we're talking about here, um you know, the different, the overcharge was, you know, roughly $30,000 for the city based on the rate we use versus what we need going forward. Does that help? I mean, we can, we can walk through the math, but it's, we took, we had several meetings to try to go do that. And you know, but that's fundamentally what, you know, what everybody in the committee and our financial advisors agreed that those two things would, would do it.
So essentially, the way I read these ordinance, and Scott can correct me if I'm wrong. One ordinance lowers the rate from 15 and a half cents a kilowatt hour to 14 and a half cents.
15.4.
15.4 to 14 and a half cents with a credit back of 1390.
Oh, 1320.
1320 on each residence.
Each meter, yeah.
Each meter. And then the other one lowers it down to what, 14.11 cents?
Yeah.
14.11 cents a kilowatt hour. And then that is essentially lowering down lower. So that way, based on the kilowatt usage from last year, all the residents are receiving, receiving back the money that they overpaid of the 1320 over the next five months.
So the forecast based on, it's based on last year's share, and this is all for non-demand customers only. The ones that have meters, it's demand customers don't have meters. So they weren't involved in the formula that, you know, basically double charged the $13 increase from 12 to 25. That's essentially what happened. We put it in the rate and then we also pull, you know, doubled it and put it in the $25.
So the residential rate would drop to 1411 and the demand and, and commercial rate would be?
Same.
Same. Which was what?
I don't remember. It was different for each demand category. There's three different demand rates. The schools, commercial, and Baker all have their own. It's in the ordinance.
All in there.
Okay, well, it was in business. It was in business, sorry.
Okay. Saw it.
So Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, why they're looking at that. So the difference between the two options really is, one gives you the customer a bigger credit back in little higher kilowatt rate. Or the other one doesn't give a credit, but lowers the kilowatt rate more.
To make up for that credit you're not getting.
Okay. And the credit.
Over the five.
And the credit's going to be?
1320 per meter on the first option. Yeah.
Okay.
Because basically we double counted the $12, or the, excuse us, the $12 we counted twice.
Yeah.
Um, and then it was also multiplied by the 10% increase. So it was a 13. Incorrect charge.
And the difference in the kilowatt was 1411 and 14.52-ish?
11 and 14.
50.
50. Yeah, so. 0.39. Tens of a percent.
I guess maybe before we decide, I mean, before we make decisions here, I don't know, you may want to present. I mean, we're seeing, you know, obviously Jeff's got some data on, I guess we can show it on kilowatt hour usage for the past, how many years? 2020. So you can see how, you know, July is always, you know, the peak. But maybe Jeff, you want to talk to it about what you're seeing? If you have that, it's in a packet. The billing for last month. A bad time to raise the rates, but.
But you had to catch July. Otherwise, we would have been chasing that and the rates would have been higher, you know?
That's why we're going to, you know, we're going to.
Yeah.
Make it square here with the next ordinance. But you know, we expect it to be lower in August. As you can see historically, it is. But you know, with what we've seen here this month, I'm concerned it's going to be another high month.
So on those five years, there was about half of them that were, July was higher than, than, I'm sorry, August was higher than July and about half July was higher than August. So it's all based on weather. And if we have some cooler temperatures at, you know, last part of this month, we may be lower than last month. But I would expect not a whole lot of difference between last month and this month.
I think in my mind, you know, if we think it's going to be more kilowatt hours used August through December than we forecast, you know, with the lowest rate, the second option, that's going to actually give more back than the intended, you know, $30,000 because it's based on that forecast. So I mean, that's the only benefit I see in, you know, in doing that is potentially, it's more beneficial to the non-demand customers. But you get over five months, you don't get it all in one month. And then by doing either one of these options, I mean, are we pretty safe? Are we assuming that there won't be any more increases needed for the rest of the year until we go forward?
Yeah, so I mean, part of this was scrubbing the reserve, looking at these forecasts, looking at our expenses year to date. So um the committee and Baker Tilly were very comfortable with where the reserves are going to be. Expect them to be well within our policy by the end of the year, which is actually higher than what we. And we started the year out thinking, hey, we're going to be below policy. So um answer your question is, right now, we're pretty comfortable.
Okay.
So we would not expect a rate increase for the rest of the year. And I want to make sure everybody remembers that we built in that automatic municipal cost index, inflation index that we factor in every year, right? So regardless of whether the council takes action or not, whatever that inflation number is, will be added to wherever we ended, the rates ended up. And all that is, is it factors in, just like the consumer price index, all the, all the, all the infrastructure that utilities have to go buy to support it, as those go up, it factors in that. And I think last year was like two and a half, 2.5%. It's typically down around what we expect inflation to be. But you know, with tariffs and other things, you don't know what's going on there.
Any other council discussion?
The only thing I will add, because I think it went to your question back when we passed this, was the other thing that we did in the second half is we, we shifted the debt fee percentages between demand and non-demand. Historically, in at least first half of this year, um I mean, roughly the kilowatt hour percentage is 70% non-demand and 30% demand, um which is really what first half was, very close to that. But when you look at it, the way we structured the meter fee, um you know, they ended up paying 80% of the first half. So you know, basically the year's annual half of it, they paid 80%, which is above their kilowatt hour percentage. So what we did in the formula going forward is we, we matched the kilowatt hour percentage used to how much of the infrastructure rate they either pay in the rate as the demand customers do, or the, the demand, non-demand customers have in the meter fee. So it balanced that out, shifted it over to the demand customers to kind of do their fair share. So that was the one thing we did, make that more equitable. So I guess the biggest question is, option one or option two, is the, is the $13 back next month better? With, or like you said, with the other option, not giving that back, but lowering the kilowatt to the 1411? I mean, when, when you guys run numbers, and I know you guys are digging into this big time and trying to do what is best. Do you think lowering it to the 1411 will save them more than $13 over the next five months? Would that be more beneficial? I mean?
I mean, I think, I mean, the question is, are we going to use more kilowatt hours um in the next five months than we forecast? And I believe we will, just based on what we saw in July.
I mean, yeah, because if August ends up being higher for some reason in July, then they get a lower rate.
No doubt. I mean, people can start using less. I mean, and I would think.
I mean, next week.
Everybody can try to do that as well anyway. So.
Yeah.
That really is the question, you know, and if, if it's above the kilowatt hours below, the difference is going to be very small in actual dollars.
Hmm.
So even if we're under a little bit, you know, the amount that any individual residents would lose relative to that $13.20 would be, you know, less than a dollar if that. So to me, the upside is appealing for the resident.
I was going to say, if we have, if for some reason August is higher and we have a hot September, which we could, and we're saving more money that route.
And there's no reason we can't, when we start looking at 26 rates, um build in something in, if we didn't get there, we can certainly do a credit or reduction in the 26 rates to cover it.
Hmm.
I mean, we always have that ability to, you know, do something to give it back if they haven't already gotten it. You know, does that make sense?
Hmm.
Yeah.
I think either one's fine. I mean, I don't think.
I think, I think giving the lowest kilowatt rate is probably more beneficial than just handing them back $13. Because I mean, that's.
That's the way I'm leaning.
I mean, that's just, I mean.
How does, how does going from 15.4 cents to 14.4 cents over the course of five months equal $13? That's, I just can't get, the math, this isn't working in my head. It's not even close. To say that.
No, no, no. So we, we weren't going to let that 15.4 go past this month.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, if you let it go, yeah, it'd be, it'd be much worse.
Yeah.
We caught it and the only overcharge is in July. Otherwise, it would be every month, right?
If there's no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
So the rates for everyone else, church, fraternities, sororities, business, commercial, demand, those all stay the same in both scenarios?
I'm not sure what you mean by the same.
Oh, this is, so they don't change in this scenario?
So.
Whatever the rates were in July for them, then?
Now, if you recall on what we passed in July 1, all the rates went to the non-demand rate. We didn't have different rates for different categories of non-demand customers. So everybody got the 15.4 cents. That wasn't a demand customer.
Okay.
And everybody got the $25 meter slash debt fee charge. And I think that's something we can look at going forward, if that makes sense, out of town, whatever. I mean, there's, I mean, there's small constituencies there. But it was a myriad of probably six different rates for 11 different categories, which didn't make a lot of sense why we were charging, you know, certain, you know, like the school districts, non-demand meters. Why are they getting a different rate than, you know, the residents and most of our commercial customers? So we just made it the same. And it didn't move the needle much because those ones that had different rates were a very small group. They basically have four rates now, one rate for non-demand that have meter debt charge fees, and then three different rates for the three different categories of demand customers.
Any other discussion?
I think Cory's done thinking.
I'm just trying to put it all, so in, in my head. It's, it's funky because the, the math went two different directions. It went with the thinking one way and then it got pulled back only one part of it another way. So the math all worked out before we found there that everybody was going up in the correct proportion they were supposed to be going up. But it's only the residential coming back now. So is that getting, is that mistake getting passed on to?
Did that move over?
Right.
No, because we didn't.
That's what I'm trying to find.
Didn't raise the demand percentage at all.
Okay, so, so.
It didn't move.
We're not going to have to worry about the school district and, and Baker and them coming out to us being like, whoa, this has got influxed over here.
You can never say never, but you know, we didn't take, you know. So, so, so the reason we raised theirs higher than, if you remember, higher than the non-demand was the inequity in the.
Right.
Infrastructure.
Right.
Share.
Yes.
So that was done, the 15% did that. And then that didn't change with these new ordinances.
Okay.
Those numbers, those rate numbers, we don't use percentages, they're actual rate.
Right.
Those are the same as we passed on July.
Okay, that's all I was trying to.
Yeah. So we didn't change their fee structure at all.
Yeah, and I know, and I know Baker and the school district are important. We don't want to make them mad, but there are two people in this community where this helps the majority. So and most of those people live here. So I mean, I don't think.
You just want it to be fair. And that's all I'm trying to say.
No, I know. But I'm saying, I think it is fair because sometimes those entities get a free pass and I think it's okay.
I agree. The fact that, you know, you pull 30%, you know, off the grid and paying a fraction of the meter fee, which is now the debt fee. I mean, that, that had to get resolved.
Right.
But it's a lot of moving parts.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's fair, you know. Yeah, I think that's fair. And these will be continuing to be scrutinized, you know, constantly going forward by everybody involved. And we're going to have the opportunity to change them at any time if we find something. And certainly we're going to have to look at it starting in October for 2026, which is not very far away.
Well, luckily, I think whichever decision we make, whichever option, the good thing is, is that it's helping the community. So, and that's, I know that's what everyone up here's main goal is. So um I don't know if this is the right time, but I want to thank Scott, I want to thank Cory and the mayor for digging into this ever since the last uh rate increase in July. I know I had some questions. Scott brought them back and was working on answering them. So I just want to say thank you to you guys for digging into this. And then even at the town halls, taking, taking all the questions and trying to tell the community why. Because I think that was a big thing, was a lot of people just wanted to understand why. They still may not be happy, but I think they understand a little bit more. So they're still not happy, but they, they're okay with the adjustment. But what you guys had to do, tough, tough job. So thank you for digging into all the numbers. And I think it says a lot that you guys came back so quickly. And I know you guys started working on this even before the town halls and before everything, that as soon as that vote was passed, that you guys got back into it and was like, okay, is this, you know? So I just want to say thank you for what you guys did to um go back, look at the numbers. And then whichever option we do, it's going to save most of the community money. So thank you.
Jay, I just want to make sure we don't lose sight of the fact that our target was to raise. revenue ten percent. And I think that's what has it earned. I understand that. That didn't go away, but they raised a little higher than they should have. And we just corrected a mistake that we, that was made and we, we got it quickly. So it's still not like we want it to be. We still raising it more than we wish we had to. And we'll continue to find ways to try to lower the expense line to keep the cost down. And we learned a lot from those forums, by the way. A lot, a lot of good, a lot of good feedback. I think we need to incorporate and we'll talk about that, I think, in, you know, at the end. But, you know, I think that was a good part of it is, you know, you know, transparency, we all talk about that all the time and we're very, very focused on that. Until you hear it fed back to you that you're not, you, you kind of go, wait a second. You got to then think it through and say, well, wait a second. I understand the, the call, the sentiment of lack of transparency because they didn't have the information. Now, you can say, well, you didn't come get it. It was available. But I think we knew a better, we need to do a better job. And we're giving a lot of good examples of how we do that so that they have, once they get the information, then you have transparency. Right? So you can sit there and go, well, we made it available. They're all open meetings, but I understand that's probably not the best thing to do. Because people are busy. They don't know which ones to join. So I think we need to come up and we'll talk about it, come up with some processes that get the information out. And then we are more transparent because they now have the information. So that was, that was an eye opener for me. But Jay, I appreciate the sentiment.
We have a motion?
I'll go ahead and move to approve the rates and option two for ordinance fifteen seventeen.
Second.
And moved in seconds, Scott?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Susan? Jay? Motion passes for on. Next, solar ordinance discussion relative to state statute.
Recuse myself for this one.
So we received information from, from our electrical department that the state statute has changed and how we have to handle our solar net metering policies. And if you want to come up and kind of present to the council what what the state requirements are or what we need to do here.
Okay, so I, last week I sent out an email to you guys to get, kind of give you a heads up of what's going on. Like Casey said, earlier this year, the state legislature passed some solar or, or solar laws that, that have to be followed by municipal utilities. So there wasn't a, a large change as a way we handle it, but there's, there's a couple of minor things. So first of all, all, let me back up a minute. So I'm, reverse power would be power that the solar produced and, and excessive what they were using and it goes back onto our system. Forward power is the amount that the customer is using power from the utility. So the way we handled it before was through both of our solar ordinances, the, the net metering and the parallel generation was we would credit any reverse power up until they met the amount of power that they take from us during a month time. If they produced more than that, then that amount was basically donated to the city. So under the parallel generation, which was our, is our commercial customers currently, they received our monthly avoided costs of energy and, and we were generous and we included energy, capacity, transportation, and agency fees from KMEA all included in, into this formula, which was figured every month. And basically all the commercial customers were receiving eight to nine cents a kilowatt hour for any reverse power up until the amount of the, the amount that they take from us. On our net metering side, which is our residents, we were, we were a little better towards the solar. So they would receive full retail credit up until the amount of energy that, that they took from us and then forfeited the rest. So now this, by state law, any reverse power has to be credited to the customer. If we call our generation, parallel generation, we determine how much the rate is that we give the customer for, for all of their reverse power. So if we call it net metering going forward, then they have to receive full retail for any reverse power up until the amount to take, take from us. But then we also have to give them at least our avoided energy costs only, which is roughly two to three cents per kilowatt hour. So I know this is really confusing. I'm seeing a lot of looks on your faces that you're not understanding it, but so, so I went to KMEA and had their attorney look it over. They're helping all of our cities. They've come up with, between them and Kansas Municipal Utilities, they've come up with a generation toolbook for all, all of the cities to work through this process. But the, the easiest thing that I would see is that we just continue our ordinances the way they are. We call them all parallel generation. We, but we can also have a commercial parallel generation at a residential generation that, that gets us a different rate. So we could keep it essentially like we have it now. The, the residential customers will still get retail credit. The commercial customers will still get the, the eight to nine cents avoided costs. And then any energy that's produced over and over the amount that they take from us, then, then we can give them as little as the two to three cents or more if you guys would like. So that's kind of.
Jeff, a hundred fifty percent avoided cost rate, I think it says in the ordinance, is that the two to three cents?
So that is what's law, but in the past Baldwin has given the, the energy charge plus all the other incremental charges that, that go into our wholesale cost. So that's where the eight to nine cent came in.
Okay.
So it's, it's roughly six cents times one and a half. Because again, it's the, the eight, nine cent.
Another thing, thing I think it did that I picked up on is it has system size rules. Is that new from our current?
Yes, that's the second new option that we have to address because our ordinances state appropriately sized, but don't give a good definition of what appropriate size system is. It's kind of left up to the interpreter. Now state law is that if you're calling it parallel generation, there's a given formula for your last 12 months. And if we're calling it net metering, that formula is double. So they can, they can have double the size of a system. As, as if we call it a parallel generation.
Double the size rated, related to their last 12 months.
Yes.
Or what's?
Last 12 months of usage.
Average or, I mean, it's a kilowatt hour.
It's a, it's a formula. You take their total last 12 months kilowatt hours divided by eighty eight, seventy seven, I think. I'm going off the top of my head, then divide that by, depending on whether we call it net generation or parallel by, by another factor. If we'd go with a net metering policy, then the sizing is to the point where there will be some customers that will be reversing more power. Then what if, if we went with it, with the parallel generation, then, then that size would be down to where typically a, a normal customer probably would not have an excess reverse power.
Is there any cost to the city when somebody over generates power and we take it back? Does that, I mean, I know like when we purchase power from Oklahoma, we have to transmit it. So we have transmission costs for that. For net metering within our city limits, is there any cost that if the council decided to give a credit of five cents a kilowatt hour back to us, is there any cost to us besides buying the power?
No.
Any other questions for Jeff?
No, I think it's going to be helpful. So what's the deadline per state statute where we have to have our ordinance? Or what do we, I mean, what are you shooting for to have an ordinance in place?
Well, we currently have a, our first application for solar since this law passed.
Okay.
Um, I, I believe we've submitted to us on the twenty ninth of July. We legally have ninety days to give them an answer, but I don't think we should try to take that long. I mean, I think we need to try to get on this as quickly as possible and, and get it nailed down. So we can give that customer for sure an answer. And I, I think there's been a little more interest in it as well. The ordinance I included in the packet was the one from KMEA, but the way it's worded is all customers would receive the full wholesale. That is just an option.
It was all parallel. They didn't have a, I think it was all parallel.
It's all parallel, but it was, it, it was stated so that all customers, whether it be commercial or residential, would, would receive full wholesale credit back on up to the amount they take.
Wholesale credit, but right now we give.
No, retail. I'm sorry. If I said wholesale, I meant retail.
Okay.
That's the way that ordinance is worded, but again, that's just an option. We, we can't, I went back to him and said, can we keep it the way we're at? And, and the advice we got was yes.
Any other questions for Jeff at this time? All right. Thanks, Jeff. Anybody from the public like to speak to this agenda item?
Just that it's holding up our, our getting.
We see no other public comments. We'll close public comment, open up council discussion.
Yeah, I think we need to move as quickly as possible, but again, I think we, you know, technically we could use this as first reading and pass an ordinance as second reading next in two weeks. I mean, I always like to see a comparison between what we currently have for both customer categories and then what we would propose as a new ordinance and then look at impact, whether it's sizing restrictions. You know, we talked about, you know, meter fee being added, you know, now everybody's got a debt fee, sorry. So I, I just think having that comparison about what's changing from where we're at to whatever we decide to go to, that's what you, people are interested in. That's what we would talk to is this is what's different and this is the impact. And it's not clear to me. I'm just not familiar enough with the current ordinances to, to figure that out. But I think fundamentally, the net metering was, correct me if I'm wrong, it was, we're going to pay you for anything you generate back to us during the day at, at the retail rate we charge you and it's coming to you at night. Correct? It's the same fourteen, one point, point one four, one, one. Up until you hit zero for the month and then you continue generating electricity that we use, but they don't get any, any, any back. So it's retail to retail to get to zero. And then whatever you generate in excess, you know, we're going to put on the grid and, and sell as part of our energy. So.
So the statute has restrictions on how big you can build your system. So I mean, it's kind of a, I don't know, it's kind of a slippery slope to think that, oh, you know, it's, you know, one's going to be more drastic than the other. I think it's going to be pretty similar. Cause you can't feasibly based on the square footage that they, they give you the guidelines of what size you can put on, like, I don't know. I see, I don't see much of a difference.
I thought it was usage based on the, on the generation based.
Yeah. So the, so the, the law states that you take, like I said, that the formula that you take the last 12 months usage. If there is no last 12 months, say it's a, a new building or something, then there is a square foot finished.
Yeah.
Floor space equation there as well.
But after a year, they go, they go to usage.
Well, after a year, your system's already built. So if, if it's approved to be built.
Yeah, you're not, you're not.
Yeah, if. But if you were to add.
Yes, yes.
I misunderstood. Prevents you from adding to it.
Yeah.
They'll, they'll refer, they'll reference your usage and say, we, there's no need to add here because you follow the skyline of the usage, right?
Correct. If you were to resubmit another application wanting more than yes, that you could use the, the last 12 months of, of usage to determine the appropriate size of that.
I'm just picturing somebody, you know, say, okay, well, I'm going to attach, you know, this to my house, but it ends up just being mostly like garaging space or storage space. But he still counts as your square footage for you to go and then.
I think it's finished space. I think there's a, there's a guideline there.
I just remember the square footage piece and I was like.
Yeah, a square footage of finished, if I remember correctly, it's, it's in the, the ordinance. I know that. That's an awful long.
And right now, our, our ordinance is reasonable with no solid definition of what that is for size.
Right.
Which is just not good. It, it puts decision making in somebody's hands.
Right.
That's not good. Okay.
I think really what we need is guidance from the council so that we can develop an ordinance.
I think Scott's right. I, I'd like to see the side by side kind of scenario ran of, I mean, can we just take like a random make, made up residents and just say, here's what this would look like on their bill at this usage versus this, and then do a new construction scenario where you, I mean, that's what we'd have to do.
Well, I assume that current customers are grandfathered in if they're, they, you know, if they are new enough that they overbuilt to the square footage requirement that's coming on, or that they're, they overbuilt to their power requirement. I assume there, we don't force them to turn off panels.
No.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that they, if they got, they built too much, that's, we're going to, that's what it's going to be going forward.
Like they get penalized for it.
Well, yeah, you're, 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 you're before the law, basically.
Right.
It's enacted, so you don't have to go back and change. So I just want to make sure that we're, we're on agreement on that. But yeah, I think as a council, we need to decide, you know, are we trying to incentivize more solar? I think that's kind of what it has been. Put it to where we incentivize people to do that. You know, so I'm, I would look for the ongoing ordinance to continue to do that as long as it doesn't unfairly burden the rest of the customers or
Right.
you know, debt help and all that. But you know, if you can generate enough electricity that zero out your bill every month, I'm, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Whether we call that parallel, we can make that work, I assume, in the parallel mode or not. It's only the net metering where you have the stops at zero, right?
No, it's actually both. They're both handled the same way. Really, the only difference is, is is the sizing, appropriate sizing. Cause we can use, we can call it parallel generation and still have two different rate classes within there if we want.
Right.
But really the only real difference between the two of them would be the, the appropriate sizing guidelines.
What's your recommendation? Just?
To me, what makes sense is to have everybody a parallel generation customer. We keep the, the reimbursement the way it is. So, so basically the only thing that changes is the, the extra net energy, you know, the energy over and above what they take from us. Could be credited, like I said, as, as low as energy only costs, which two to three cents. And that's up to you guys, you know, what you do with that extra energy. But it, it's not hurting the customers that have it now. But it's equitable. The sizing is appropriate for, you know, a system. So that would be just for the most cohesion, you know, to keep it the way it is, other than we'll call it net, net, or I'm sorry, call it parallel generation.
Thanks.
Okay. So I guess we'll have staff develop a couple scenarios and ordinances.
Yeah, I think we look at his recommendation and try to treat them under a parallel gen, single, you know, parallel generation ordinance with different classes. That, you know, we can treat differently on, on rates. So we'll be looking at what the size change is going to be and it's going to be hard to compare the new into reasonable. I get that. But maybe if we know what the sizes of those that were already installed, would they pass the new sizing? Right? So it's like, well, everybody's built so far would not have built, been able to build that much under the new ordinance. Just to know how aggressive those are in sizing.
So the parallel generation. So the parallel generation sizing is fairly robust. I mean, I, I would think that most of the people probably would fall under that, that size for the ones we have now. There might be one or two, you know, that would, that would have been larger than, than what that would allow. But the, the sizing is basically to try to get to where the customer isn't overproducing all the time.
Yeah.
So, cause typically, you know, every, every customer is going to have a, a debt fee now. But, but if the system is sized too large, the credit from the extra reverse energy can exceed that $25 debt fee. So you could, a customer could literally not be paying any part of the debt fee because their credit is, is so much larger.
Would you make it to where that it, they wouldn't affect the debt fee to where it's separate? Why, why, why does, why does it have to eat at the debt fee?
It's a credit to your bill. It has to be credited to your bill. So even if you had a $25 fee, if your credit was 30, then that, then that is a negative five.
But that's still, you're still, we still get the benefit of the credit, the energy. So it's just, it's just you're trading.
They wouldn't have a bill though. That's what I'm saying. They wouldn't have a bill and that credit would, we'd either have to pay them that $5 or it could roll onto the next month. That's, that's legal too, to have the, any credit roll onto the next month.
But we would gain that value in energy that would be offsetting elsewhere.
Correct.
Yeah.
I mean, theoretically, if we were, say, let's take the residential customers. If we had their credit rate at the full retail, they could generate the same amount of kilowatt hours that they use for the month, which would zero out their rate charge. And what he's saying is they could do another couple, you know, kilowatt hours and, and zero out the, the debt.
Understand. Yeah.
Um, but as soon as they go past that, then, you know, depending on what we set the rate at, beyond that, you know, we look at what we would charge because going into our pool and we're charging 1.1441. So that two, three, six, five, six cents versus what we're charging there. So there's a, there's a gap. I mean, there's a money in there for us to make up that $25.
Yes.
They hit it exactly, then no, but if they produce more than that, then we're benefiting from that.
Correct.
Yeah. So we need to look at that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Not that I want to look at any more spreadsheets.
Oh, I think we wish to look, well, we have to.
Were we tracking along the right thing in that way as far as?
I feel, I feel like if they, all, all the way up to zero, you owe the, you owe the debt fee. And then once you exceed zero, then it, then you can have that kind of.
I'm not sure by parallel law, we can do that.
Um, yeah, by, by either law, but the parallel is keeping the size down.
Right. So debt fee is considered a, a, a charge and they get credited up to zero on all the charges for the utility.
Well, again, even though it's a separate fee.
Right.
If they had mi, if they had minus more credit than you had on that fee, then the, the net bill was zero or negative.
But that's, that's okay. I mean, as long as, as long as, because, because let's, let's say, hey, you produced $200 in energy. Here's your, here's your $200 check. Oh, wait, we got to pull out the debt fee. Here's your $180 check, you know, whatever it is, you know. Well, I see you're still getting, you're still getting the value and the energy that you used.
Right.
We didn't have the opportunity to cost to pay for somewhere else off the open market.
And you're not paying full retail back. You're paying the energy cost if that's what you guys decided to do.
Really, it's a bargain.
That's the, that's the analysis is.
Yeah.
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 That rate, the wholesale rate.
Hmm.
Or the, whatever they call it, avoided cost rate. So. Yeah. I mean, I think we look at a parallel rate, two different categories and look at, I guess, legacy stuff to do a quick check. And then what's different in the ordinances.
Right.
And then we can look at it in budget and finance and try to vet it quickly and bring it to the council. And if we don't have all the answers and we have more questions, we're going to push it to the next one. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah. I mean, I think the goal is to pass an ordinance at the next meeting. We just wanted to discuss it, see where the council went.
In place, can we not just an approval from the council to continue on with our project? We submitted it three weeks ago and we just found out, I think last week that it needed to come before y'all were able to start the project. So I was under the impression we just needed to get it approved by you and there is an ordinance already in place. We would still be subject to the new ordinance too.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, but you might be in the grandfather phase too, right? If, if, you know, it gets back to reasonable. I have no idea what that is.
I think we've been in discussions with the company that we're working with and, you know.
Yeah.
That what we've proposed is reasonable.
And, and this is the company that's selling you the solar? Okay.
Russ, if you want to work with on that, I mean, that's kind of your wheelhouse. I mean, I personally, I, I, I mean, I don't have a problem with it because we've approved them up until now under this. I mean, it's, they got to abide by whatever state law and whatever ordinance says already. To me, it's six, one way, half a dozen the next. I mean, um, does council disagree on that?
Yeah. I mean, I would think normally we'd look for a recommendation from staff on. Yeah. I would just need to look at our current to what we're, what, you know, exactly what the state statute is showing and see if there's any difference. I, I don't, I have not looked at any of the customers' documents as of today, but, um, you know, a lot of that comes down to, you know, sizing ability and, and you don't want somebody putting in a system that they're going to pay an extra 20 or $30,000 and then they're not, never going to see the, the rate of return. And that's why the state changed a lot of the statutes in that regards. Because they were having, and my understanding was is they were having a lot of door to door salesmen's that were going around and, you know, selling a bill of goods to people. And they ended up spending $30,000, $40,000 more than they should have. And it's more for customer protection than it is anybody else. And that's, that was kind of my understanding from it. But I, like I said, I've not, I've not looked at this individual's plans.
I mean, wouldn't it be reasonable based off the data of the solar projects that we already approved? To just get in a room with everybody, discuss it, look at the project and see if it seems reasonable to the city staff on their size and.
Well, the reason I think I've been in correspondence with that family and the reason that I, I give on my email was that I didn't want you guys to change the, the reimbursement for the reverse power. And they're thinking that, you know, because you could legally go as, as low as two to three cents for reimbursement on any reverse power. And I, I didn't want them signing on a system that, that.
But to me, it sounds like they're willing to accept that.
Our due diligence. I mean, we're, we're aware of what the current ordinance is and, and that was all a part of the planning with, with the project.
Right. But I think what Jeff's saying is the new ordinance could change.
You want to come up to the mic just so people at home, Jeff, you can stay up there just so we can hear you as well.
You're doing fine.
You're doing fine. Um.
So I just think, I think what I heard Jeff say is, um, you know, you built your return on investment based on what you, on the current ordinance and what we currently pay as a, as a return rate. But what we're discussing is potentially changing that. And would impact your analysis compared to the current ordinance. And, you know, if you could move forward with building something, all of a sudden the return isn't what you thought it would be. This protects you. So I would say if we have a goal of making a decision in two weeks, either passing a new ordinance or approving yours, is that going to be a problem for you?
Kind of. I mean, I, I don't understand why if there's already an ordinance in place and we're willing to take on that risk.
Okay.
You know, like I said, we've done our due diligence. We're ready to move forward with the project.
That's fair. I mean, I think it is just something that needs a council approval anyway.
I don't think so. I think this can be staff.
They're, yeah, they're, they're working within the.
So.
Ordinance.
I would say to your point, get in a room and, and go through it and make sure you understand it and make sure it's reasonable to the current ordinance.
I'm very uncomfortable with the position that you're taking.
Ordinance may not be in alignment with what the current state law is. So if you are anticipating or considering accepting an approval based on an old ordinance that may not be in alignment with what your obligations are, whether they're willing to take the risk or not are different. So that means that either generally what happens when you approve something, you're going to have to change the language in that, that makes it clear. And if that's what they're wanting to do, I think that's different. But the difference between saying, hey, we have a current ordinance in effect and him saying, you have an ordinance in effect, but it is not in alignment. Well, what the recent law changes are, changes the dynamic.
Right. I hear that point, but is there not any, um, does it go into, did it go into effect January 1 or July 1?
Assuming July 1, most statutes are, become effective on July 1st.
Okay. I was thinking it wasn't.
Yeah.
Later.
Most, most, most statutory changes because of how the legislature set up are effective July 1. I don't know this one particularly, but it's going to be effective July 1.
So we're out of, so if you're out of compliance with the state statute.
And if you're out of compliance, the fact that she, you're willing to accept something based on the old ordinance doesn't really change the rules. Now, do I think that that can ultimately, can she proceed forward with you changing the language that says this is subject to whatever? So that she's not grandfathered in and they're willing to take that risk. I think that's different, but I don't think you can just do business as usual.
Okay.
I appreciate that. Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah. I mean, that's your decision.
Well, I think we'll, we'll work quickly. We'll get hopefully a resolution by next meeting after working with our legal, make sure we're doing it correctly and.
And, and if you want to, I don't know what kind of language they would need to, you know, make sure that we aren't liable for moving forward. And I don't know what that would look like, but I think it would be easiest if you could wait two weeks and, and we come up with an ordinance and then we're, you're legal, we're legal, we aren't approving solar with an outdated ordinance, which.
Did you not just say though, that we didn't actually need the council's approval?
You don't, you don't. But I think to Shay's point is, um, if the city approves, anybody gives you permission, which I think they have to, it's with an outdated ordinance, I think is the issue. If, if the ordinance wasn't due for another 30 days and we could do it legally and we could give you approval, the city could, and we're within compliance. But because it was July 1, um, we need to.
And then we submitted it almost a month ago.
Right. Yep. Understand.
We'll get working on it, get it back to the council at the next meeting. Thank you. Council committee reports, budget and finance, Scott.
Uh, yeah, we met multiple times. And it was just working with, you know, Baker Tilly and, and, you know, and the committee on making sure that we had a couple of options for the rate that we just passed. So that was, that was the bulk of our time. Do we need to meet Friday based on the solar?
Probably next Friday, I'd say, by next Friday.
Okay.
Based for this ordinance, but we'll have to give staff time to develop the ordinance.
Following Friday. Okay. Okay. So the next meeting would be, you're saying just skip a Friday?
Yeah.
So the 29th.
Yeah.
August 7:30 AM, second floor, city hall.
We need development, Corey.
We met yesterday. Um, only had one kind of rolling topic, which is the, uh, the food truck ordinance. And we had a, a group from Douglas County come down and speak, uh, to the committee sort of within the context of that ordinance. I missed the first 15 minutes because I was in the car.
I missed the whole meeting.
But, um, I, I think they did kind of brush me up on it afterwards, um, uh, while they were still meeting. But it sounds like it was just more educational, kind of introducing themselves, uh, making themselves available and resources available. As we kind of developed this, this ordinance. And there was, there was a member of the brick and mortar community there. And it was just mostly listening to what they had to say and, um, offering their expertise going forward as we develop this ordinance and we are still in the process of that.
Next meeting.
Next meeting is the 20, I've marked it right here. Next meeting is September 22nd, four o'clock, second floor, city hall.
Public safety, Susan.
We met and we discussed establishing fees associated with marijuana offenses. We didn't really have anything set in stone, so we looked at surrounding cities and determined first offense, $100 plus court fees and associated lab fees. And then, um, second offense, $200 plus the court and lab fees. Then third offense, I guess would actually be considered a felony. So I sent you an email, Shay, on that. And our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September 9th at four o'clock.
And I, I know you looked at surrounding cities, but there is actually something I think that does it statewide. So, um, I will send you that information back and you can see if you want to amend it. City of Lawrence is obviously the outlier here.
Right. Yeah, we noticed that.
To figure out what you want to do. You still part of the same county, which makes it interesting, but see how you want to handle that.
Okay.
Hopefully works. Hey, did you get?
We have not met, um, since the last meeting and Julie said she will get a new date for the meeting when she gets back into town. When we do meet, we'll meet at pub, the public works building instead of second floor city hall. So we will get that updated as soon as Julie gets us a date.
Strategic plan, Scott.
I've not met, um, and don't have anything currently on the calendar.
Uh, any staff comments, Russ? Any council comments?
Thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to.
Go ahead.
I, I, I gave you my thoughts on the, you know, the community forum we had. I know we took down several questions. Uh, we need to figure out how we're going to respond to those, you know, transparent way. Um, and then, you know, I think you maybe as part of the strategic planning, as part of our transparency focus, we developed some things, outreach things. And I know you were putting a, a committee together to brainstorm ideas about that. You know, what outreach looks like, you know, meeting people where they're at, what makes sense, what we can afford to do. So I, I think if nothing else, that's a benefit that's going to come out of this, which I'm pleased to see.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's like the one good thing that came out of all of this is it, um, gave us a different perception of, um, how we handle things. And, you know, I think we tried to be transparent, but clearly we weren't doing a good enough job. So, um, I think we've got some good takeaways and we can definitely do better going forward.
All right. With that, I will need a motion to adjourn into executive session, probably for 20 minutes till 8:30 with myself, city council, Russ Harding, Shay Downing, our city attorney for the purposes of discussing non-elected personnel. And I guess to discuss non, non-elected personnel. Attorney.
30 or?
30, 30. And moved, is there a second?
Second.
Been moved to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, opposed, nay, motion passes. All opposed, opposed, nay, motion passes.
and it was just working with, you know, Baker Tilly and, and, you know, and the committee on making sure that we had a couple of options for the rate that we just, uh, passed. So that was, that was the bulk of our time. Do we need to meet Friday based on the solar?
Probably next Friday, I'd say, by next Friday.
Okay.
Based for this ordinance, but we'll have to give staff time to develop the ordinance.
The following Friday.
Okay. Okay. So the next meeting would be, uh, you're saying just skip a Friday?
Yeah.
So the twenty ninth?
Yeah.
August seven thirty AM, second floor city hall.
We need development, Corey.
We met yesterday, um, only had one kind of rolling topic, which is the, uh, the food truck ordinance. And we had a, a group from Douglas County come down and speak, uh, to the committee, sort of within the context of that ordinance, um, um, I missed the first fifteen minutes because I was in the car.
I missed the whole meeting.
But, but, um, I, I think they did kind of brush me up on it afterwards, um, uh, wh- while they were still meeting, um, but it sounds like it was just more educational, kind of introducing themselves, um, uh, making themselves available and resources available, um, as we kind of, uh, developed this, this, uh, ordinance. Um, and there was, there was a member of the, uh, brick and mortar community there. Um, and it was just mostly listening to what they had to say and, um, offering their expertise going forward as we develop this ordinance and we are still in the process of that.
Next meeting?
Next meeting is the twenty, I've marked it right here. Next meeting is September twenty second, four o'clock, second floor city hall.
Public safety, Susan.
We met and we, um, discussed establishing, um, fees associated with marijuana offenses. Um, we didn't really have anything set in stone, so we looked at surrounding cities and determined first offense, a hundred dollars plus court fees and associated lab fees. And then, um, second offense, two hundred dollars plus the court and lab fees. Um, then third offense, I guess would actually be considered a felony. So I sent you an email Shay on that, um, and our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September ninth at four o'clock.
And I, I know you looked at surrounding cities, but there is actually something I think that does it statewide. So, um, I will send you that information back and you can see if you want to amend it. Uh, City of Lawrence is obviously the outlier here.
Right. Yeah, we noticed that.
To figure out what you want to do. You still part of the same county, which makes it interesting, but see how you want to handle that.
Okay.
Public works, did you get?
Uh, we have not met, um, since the last meeting and, uh, Julie said she will get a new date for the meeting when she gets back into town. Um, when we do meet, we'll meet at pub, the public works building instead of second floor city hall. So we will get that updated as soon as Julie gets us a date.
Strategic planning, Scott.
I've not met, um, and don't have anything currently on the calendar.
Uh, any staff comments, Russ? Any council comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to.
Go ahead.
I, I, I gave you my thoughts on the, you know, the community forum we had, um, I know we took down several questions, uh, we need to figure out how we're going to respond to those, you know, transparent way. Um, and then, you know, I think you maybe as part of the strategic planning, as part of our transparency focus, we developed some things, um, outreach things. And I know you were putting a, a committee together to brainstorm ideas about that. Um, you know, what outreach looks like, you know, meeting people where they're at, what makes sense, what we can afford, uh, to do. Um, so I, I think if nothing else, that's a benefit that's going to come out of this, which I'm pleased to see.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's like the one good thing that came out of all of this is it, um, gave us a different perception of, um, how we handle things. And, you know, I think we tried to be transparent, but clearly we weren't doing a good enough job. So, um, I think we've got some good takeaways and we can definitely do better going forward.
All right. With that, I will need a motion to adjourn into executive session, probably for twenty minutes till eight thirty with myself, city council, Russ Harding, Shay Downing, our city attorney for the purposes of discussing non-elected personnel. Uh, and I guess to discuss non, non-elected personnel. Attorney.
Thirty or thirty?
Thirty. Been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Been moved to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, opposed, nay, motion passes.
Yeah. Dude, look at Susan, look at this. Look at what he did. Look how angry he was. I think it's his subconscious.
Yeah.
It's eight thirty, I'll call the meeting back in order, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I moved to adjourn.
A second.
Moved to second. Moved to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay, motion passes, we are adjourned.